Okay, well, let's reconvene our meeting then, please. Let's see, we were on a short break, it's eight nineteen, so we'll get back to the regular session. Okay, next on our agenda, Dr. Howard O'Call, as all of you know, is the executive director of the School Board Association, and I think he knows all of us, sometimes probably more than one of you. But Howard and I, we've been talking recently about our superintendent search. I shared with Howard that Mr. Minkip is leaving, and I also shared a few other things about Mr. Minkip, in fact, he's leaving, but we won't get into that.
So you're free to come down?
Well, he hasn't gone that far yet. But no, we do appreciate Dr. O'Call being here, his expertise, and I contacted his office and him to seek some advice, so he's here tonight, and he's going to, he's shared some things with me, and I think he's going to be sharing with everybody tonight, so I'm giving everyone a packet that you have before you, so I'll give you the floor, Howard.
All right, thank you. Firstly, members of the board, Superintendent Minkip, I do thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. We, what I put together is a model that can be used for a county superintendent's search, and it basically includes one primary document, which we call a notice of position vacancy. We developed this over a number of years ago, we've done superintendent searches since 1986, so of course it evolves as you do these, and the notice is something that is used by a lot of other boards who may not use our services, but have picked up on the ideas here. So the foundational document is to document, relates to spelling out the particulars relating to the county superintendents such as qualifications that are in statute. Also, the fact that when we get into qualifications, we often get into issues such as certifications, certificates, licenses, or things like that, and the good thing to remember here is that individuals will sometimes call the superintendent, the city superintendent, or the board president, or members of the board, or us, or anybody in the central office, and they will want to know if they are qualified for the position in terms of certification, certificates, things like that. So what we've developed over the years is the idea that we're not going to answer that question for you, if you have that question, then you've heard of the State Department of Education, and indeed, they will provide you the information you need to know about qualifications. This often comes into play, but not always, with people who may be out of state or something like that, but occasionally there are people in state who really don't know if they are qualified by statute in terms of the, in terms of the certificates or licensure that is required. So that's the first thing we start off with. Secondly, we move to the residency requirement. A few years ago, the legislature, and I think wisely, changed the statute so that one has to be a member or live within the county, or a contiguous county, when, when they actually begin to serve their term, which would be July 1 of 2020. And the, there is a question about whether or not the county board can say, we want you as a county superintendent-elect to live in Lincoln County, and I think that's been proven that that can be done, you have to give a good rationale for that, and that's something that some boards have now begun to do as a matter of fact, and I have language in here, but I actually guess to that point. On page two, and this is important, we get into duties. What is the duty of a county superintendent? There is one particular statute, 18410, and there's two or three others that we list out here, and those statutes provide, for the individual who may be wanting to apply for this position, returning an application, they do list out the things that are required for a county superintendent in the state. And there's other things as well, some state board policies, but this lists out the duties by statute. Then term of employment, of course, it could be from one year, two years, three years, or four years, starting on July 1 of 2020. Salary is negotiable, I think that's the best way to say it. Benefits, we find it's important to place these in the notice so that, so an applicant will know what the various benefits that are provided by the board here, some are statutory, such as retirement, things like that. Then the evaluation, let everyone know right up front, if they don't, superintendent is to be evaluated, you know, once annually, and by March 1st, the term expires on June 30. Then we use an application procedure where the individual, and this is on page three, we try to simplify this, and I think we've done a good job in getting this to a point that you just get at first the information you need as a board, you, a letter saying, I'd like to be considered for the position of Lincoln County Schools Superintendent for the following reasons, and then we also ask for contact information or references, but we really don't need the letters of reference yet, because they come a little later in the process, if indeed they are needed. Then we get into how to forward this information. There are two primary ways, one is by, one is by electronic, and the other is by hard copy. And it's best, I think, by hard copy, but some people want to use electronic, but we don't think you should use both, pick one or the other, and I think that simplifies it for us as well. Then, of course, you'll need a deadline, we really can't just, that's not in here now, and then just forward the applications, and this tells you where they would be forwarded. And then, when the association does the superintendent or assists the board, our role is largely clerical, being sure all the documents are received, getting them out to you, we don't really do a lot of the areas of checking of references early on, things like that, that will be, that comes along later. So primarily, once the documents, or the, once the documents are received, then they are provided to each member of the board at one day, one time, we can probably drive them out here, so you can all pick them up at the same time, you get them then, and you have a screening matrix, which is in the back here, that you can use to begin to screen the applications. I think it's advisable to tell anyone who is going to turn in the application, don't contact board members, now that will be done, of course, sometimes indirectly or whatever, but at least we say this. Important point number 11 is, and this often becomes an issue, but we have to say this, because under our FOIA laws, or Freedom of Information Act laws, to the extent this process falls under those laws, then this information about who's applied, whatever, would have to be then released to the news media, a request, or anyone else. And this gets kind of dicey at some points, because the association is not covered by FOIA, so we couldn't release these records if we wanted to, we would have to then contact your superintendent, who more than likely is distorting of the records, to release whatever's being requested. Well, that's a pretty good process, but then we get into another question, and we often find that some of the information requested is done in such a vague way, we couldn't release it anyway, because we really can't decipher what is really wanted in terms of the applications. I'll give you a story, that happened in Dodgers County. So finally, the superintendent sits down with the individual, the citizen, said, this is the fourth trial, let's see exactly what you want, so we can get this to, and it worked out. In fact, what the individual had originally said he was requesting, he didn't want anyway, he wanted something else, so we got that resolved that way. Doesn't always turn out that way, but this is just to point out that, that under the open meetings laws in this state and FOIA, these things do apply, then non-discrimination, you can obviously see what that, how that applies, and we need to have, in the last few years, it's been recommended by personnel directors in the various counties and others, that if you have any questions about this process, in addition to contacting us, you also need someone in the central office, a point person to contact as well, so that person may be able to help you also, and usually it's someone who's maybe the personnel director or others, who can then answer questions, once, if there are any that are addressed to the board. Then we add the specifics of the school district, these are available, sometimes in other ways, but it's better to put all this together, I think, and then, of course, if you want to know more about the schools, we give information here, and then you have a tourism bureau, or if you have a, other entities like that, sometimes people outside of county, or maybe let's say, in a different part of the state, they may want to know about activities in the county here, they may want to know about the economic parts of the county, and things like that, so those can be listed as well, and then just general questions would come to us, and rarely do we get general questions, because we try to spell it out pretty specifically, we can't answer whether you're qualified or not, other things, of course, people will ask, like, when may the position be open, well, that's on the application form and things like that. So this would really be the pivotal document that would be used in the survey process. So are there any questions about this document?
Just to clarify something, one, so it's known that if they apply, that it's possible that their name may be released to the press?
We have to tell them, and each, any county board of education in West Virginia doing a superintendent's search will have to release that information to the extent the person asks for the information to be released. Yes, that is correct.
I usually haven't gone that far, I mean, in fairness.
By the way, that rarely occurs, and when it does occur, there's two ways. We want everything, every piece of paper you've gotten, or we just simply want to know the names of the individuals you're going to interview, it's way down in the process.
Well, see, that's kind of, we've kind of...
You've always given me the finalists.
Yeah, exactly. It's way down.
And that's all I usually want.
Yeah, that's typically what we've done, we've, you know, those that are going to interview, or whatever.
And that's a good point, it's good just to share it anyway, when you get to that point of it, and, but sometimes people do request, the Parkersburg News Register, I believe, they want everything that's ever been used.
Well, some people are reluctant to apply for a position.
Correct.
Because wherever they're working in, you know, then they have like some issues.
Yeah, but, but again, I think if you, if you do it the way that you pointed out, they do apply, they do know that this is the case, they would know that in any county in the state, so I think it'd be managed pretty well.
Okay, now, as far as the sharing of this, the fact that we haven't opened it, could you go with the board here, how you, how that's done, how you publicize that?
Basically, we put this on our website, we also, this, your board can place this on the department website, the notice that positions are available. We send it to all the county superintendents, all the board presidents, if you do advertising, which we'll get into in a moment, that's another way of making a notice, and the, it is pretty good for the department website, it's good to also have it on our website, I don't think WVASA puts those things on their website, I don't believe, I don't think they've done that, so those are the two primary ways, advertising is the next vehicle that you would use to get a notice.
But that way, you're going to convey this statewide?
It goes statewide, and that's it, yes.
Yeah, for the most part, I guess, we kind of assumed that those that might be interested would primarily be, you know, within the state.
Yes, that's correct.
National thing, kind of a little suspicious of that, so if the word would get out that way, then it would be up to us to choose which news media, the Lincoln Journal, or the Charleston Gazette, or those type things.
In 2011, you did advertise, in 2015, you chose not to, I checked that today.
We're sorry, Sean.
No, I'm just, I'm just, no, the good, the good doctors, the good doctors people asked us for information on advertising, so...
It was just an oversight.
I look back 2015, and there was no ad, and I wrote about it in a story, the board declined to advertise the position locally, but 2011, you did.
We're sorry.
That's not a problem, not a problem.
So, like, if we wanted to put it in the, Markersburg, whatever.
If you look, yeah, the ad, we've got a sample ad, and I'll explain, Shirley has really got this down to a T, she's worked real hard on this, it's on a T.
A Lincoln County resident.
Okay, yes, and we've gotten it down to what we think would be some good venues for you, but this is a sample ad, that was, it's the second sheet here, second sheet, this little sheet here.
Oh.
Oh, yes, yes, sir. Now, let me, let me explain how, how we would, what we'd recommend, but recommending is just throwing out some ideas here.
Okay.
First of all, I do think you need to run the ad in your local newspaper two or three weeks, I would agree with that, and that, that's done for several reasons, but I think it's a courtesy to the newspaper to do that. Secondly, then we get into another arena, which will take this statewide, and that's working through the Press Association, and they can, this would be a press release that would go to all the newspapers in the state, all the TVs, radios, whoever is a member of that organization, that's $100, you cannot beat that. That's not state, that's statewide advertising in a very good manner, the Lincoln Journal, we thought was 156, and then you get into, if you're interested, the last part of this, and this is the Gazette mail. The Gazette mail for three weeks would be about $900, if however, you did two weeks, that would be $600, or one week, whichever you want, I think two weeks is adequate, really, you do need to advertise in the Gazette mail, that is the place where people throughout the state look for positions. Now, those would be the print, that's basically print here. Now, if you want to go to Indeed.com, and you want to go to LinkedIn, we have, you know, subscriptions to those, they will get you people from across the country, basically for, from the way we've set it up, if you want to do this. Now, having come from a county where I had a brush for this, I will, I'll make that point, it's a good way to get this notice outside the state, and if you want to do this. There is another way that we could also recommend, if you want to go outside the state, and I want to, after I say this, I want to get back to why you might want to, and why you probably don't want to. If you want to go outside the state, there's an organization called United Talent School Spring. That organization is actually centered in New Hampshire. They are just a clearinghouse for every major administrative educational job in this country, so people go, they look at these jobs, if they want to come to West Virginia, some people want to come home, they want to come to this state, then they look at that, and they may apply. There have been some superintendents who actually ended up coming to West Virginia for that reason. One of those individuals happened to have family in the Wheeling area, although he went to Tucker County to start out with, and then another individual came here just because he really wanted to be superintendent in this, in our state. So that does work. So the question of outside the state advertising, and that, is one I can't decide. The pros of that is, you get a wider net of people potentially, and you also get, combined with this advertising I've showed you, or talked about, the local and state, you get, you get a potentially great, a greater pool of applicants. The negative to this is, and I think we would all know it, except in border counties in the eastern panhandle, around Virginia and Maryland, and Pennsylvania, most, now this is a biased statement, but we're among friends, most superintendents, having had no experience with the monolithic laws written in Building Six and the legislature, have a hard time. Now, their hard time can also be alleviated if they will listen to their personnel directors, which doesn't always happen, because most everything we do in West Virginia, around school law is about personnel, because we're in declining enrollment, things like that. So your, your negative is, you don't have to interview these people anyway, but you would get their applications. Your positive is, you'd get a larger spread, so I guess you have to figure out if you want to do outside the state, or if you want to confine yourselves to the state and use the vehicles that I mentioned, or others you may come up with.
The press release that you said, how, how does that work, and who gets that?
That would be going to all the people who, that would be going to a large list, or from the Press Association. We would write the press release, and then they would place that press release in all the, of the news entities, newspapers, TV, radio.
I'm trying to see the difference then, of having our separate, our, if we were doing a press release from us, where we would pay a, whatever paper it was, with this particular one versus the one the Press Release Association would do, it wouldn't be that specific or something?
The one from the Press, Press Association, we've done these before, it would be more or less the ad here.
Oh, is it?
The Lincoln County Board of Education is seeking a county superintendent for more information, apply, here's how you apply, things like that.
Why then would one want to advertise in so many other papers, if they were going to do that for you, for us?
Well, they would do that, okay, the Press Association will do this in all their member organizations, so it may go out to 100 different entities, and then you would have the Gazette, if you want to use that, you would have your local paper, and that would be your three vehicles if you decided to use the Press Association. So you'd get broader coverage in the state, throughout like Parkersburg, Wheeling, and it would be confined basically in state, if you wanted to do that.
Right, I'm just trying to get here, just see exactly what the press release, but it would go to all the different...
It would, they would take the press release, they shape it, they fashion it, they send it back to us for review, we send it to you to look at as well.
And so for $100, that would be for that one, right?
That's one, and we've used that a lot for other things also, legislative issues we're working on, press, different press issues that we want to get out, and they had never done this before, that we asked them to do it, and so they, they write up a, just basically a notice that has all the information about applying for a position, and it's basically cost effective, and it is statewide, it's broadcast statewide.
But is there an obligation, if it's a press release, it's up to each paper to run it, correct?
It would be up to each paper to choose.
And I'm not saying we wouldn't, I'm just saying, you're not guaranteed 55 counties, or the, you know, not every paper or news organization will take it up, I mean, I, we would, but...
Well, that is correct, not every paper would run that.
Space allowing, you know.
So that's why you need to follow, if you use this, if, you wouldn't want to use this as your total vehicle of advertising, but it would enhance what you also do, but it is true that not every newspaper would choose to run it.
Well, I don't know how everyone feels, I see it'd be mostly the, even if it were the Huntington and Charleston newspapers, and our local newspaper, that's where the focus should be, but at the same time, if it's made known by the Press Association in different places, plus through the School Board Association, the state website, then you've kind of garnered a little bit of statewide exposure at the same time.
Right, yeah, this is, in other words, if you did, if you did advertise in the local paper, you advertised some in the Gazette mail, some in the Herald Dispatch, then you could use the Gazette mail and Herald Dispatch as, as larger advertising, and then you could use possibly the Press Association, if you wanted to do this.
Right, well, I'm just, so what was the Gazette, two weeks typically, what the cost?
The Gazette really, the Gazette is about $900, but if you, the way you could do this is, you could run, the Gazette would be 300 for one week, I think the Herald Dispatch is a little bit more, Shirley can figure this out, and run it for one week, then if you did the broadcast through the Press Association, that's $100, so you're up to $700, and then your local paper is 156, you're up to 1, $856.
Now, all of those there, we would be doing ourselves?
Well, we would be, we would do all the placing of the ads and everything.
Ms. President, should we do this, we're going to have a purchase order with the School Board Association.
Yeah, we would do it through that way.
Now, so your ability would include those costs?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to see if we had the individual, those from these different...
No, no, this is the easiest way to do it, actually, the way you're describing.
Oh, I agree, I just wanted to...
You said the Indeed and LinkedIn are basically free with the range that you have?
They are, because we have a subscription, because a lot of county boards use Indeed and LinkedIn.
So there would be no reason not to use that avenue as well?
Well, that's up to the board, if, I mean, we, we were proposing that for Canal County, but we didn't really get that far, but...
Well, the point would be, it doesn't cost anything, if you aren't interested in the applicants, don't call them, or don't...
Right, we did that for our congregation, for church secretary position, we got about 1,500.
Well, that's pretty good.
Well, I mean, you know, you get a lot, but your point, but the point is, there will be someone who may, who knows what this is.
Someone who is legitimate, that uses these, I mean...
And LinkedIn in particular.
Yeah, these are big, talent professional.
Right.
Right, job search services.
Exactly, and LinkedIn in particular, more so, I think, than Indeed.com, so that's just something we already have a subscription to, and you could easily use that.
Right, well, I think Riley makes a good point there, there's no cost to it, if we're not interested in whomever applied from Alaska, we don't have to come here, and we're not going to pay their airfare.
Yes.
Or bus fare.
Glad you're buying.
You're on the run.
And just, just to close the loop, you mentioned the United Talent, what is the, I mean, I, I don't think we would, speaking of myself, I don't see myself advocating that we use that service, but what is the cost for that?
It's $250. It's United Talent School Spring, it runs for a month, you cannot run it for less than a month, and it's $250. It's a national clearinghouse, very well received, in fact, since United Talent began working with that organization, and absorbed that organization, it's really, really much more efficient and much better run, so, again, most state associations I know of, who do searches, they use, they use School Spring, because it's a, it's a good way to get nationally, it's a national clearinghouse. Now, WVASA, or not WVASA, but ASA, if you want to advertise there, it's $799 at the very beginning, you can advertise at their convention coming up next week, you wouldn't have time to get it in, but for 195, but, so, really, I think, I think LinkedIn, and you may want to consider School Spring, but LinkedIn, Gazette, the Gazette, also the Herald Dispatch, and the local paper, and the Press Association gives you plenty of coverage, for not very much money, right?
And the LinkedIn cost was how much again?
Zero.
Indeed and LinkedIn are, okay.
Because they really, yeah, that's, it's...
The Herald Dispatch, okay.
I wouldn't use both, I'd use LinkedIn only, for what you're doing.
So we're thinking, the Lincoln Journal, the press release that you mentioned, the Gazette mail, the Dispatch, and the LinkedIn, right? Are those the ones?
That's what we got.
And the cost for all of those, you would, you know, those would be part of your invoice size?
Yeah, we would invoice you for those, and I think the cost for the Gazette would be, the way we could do it, the cost for the Gazette would be 300, for a sake, 300 possibly, it may be more for the Herald Dispatch, $100 for the Press Association, 156 for the Lincoln Journal, and I think that's what we were dealing with, that's 856.
Can I ask one question, because this doesn't come up very often, Dr. O'Call, but the question always arises in our office, is it, is it a legal notice, is it a display ad, or is it classified display ad? And it's always, and the school board never seems to know, and we don't know either, so what, what do you recommend? Should it be a legal notice, a, a regular display ad, or, last time, eight, nine years ago, I guess, it was a display classified.
Well, that's what we would normally do, is a classified ad.
As a display, rather than, okay.
Yeah, with, you, class, yeah, display within the classified.
Yeah, but, yeah, and I think that's what we quoted, the price we quoted, okay.
Right, that's what we would normally do. It's more or less, really, when, county boards do this in papers such as the Gazette, Herald Dispatch, as a means of notice, but also a lot of people who read those in, those in newspapers, so it'd be, it would be a classified, in classified section. And the ad copy that we propose is here, now that's not separate, I mean, you may want to add some things, if you're interested, add some things to this, but...
Yeah, well, we have time to look it over.
All right.
But just the whole entire application, of course.
Yeah, you need to look over all that, too.
Yeah, it's, it's more lengthy than typically what we'd be using.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that it's not what we should be using, for sure.
There may be things you don't, you may want to pare down, or whatever, we've just found a, we found the advantage of this is, it covers about everything you would need to know.
Okay, now, everybody understands, the way this works, it's, it's different than typically how things have worked in our county. Normally, all applications came to the board president, who in turn then somehow got them all copied, like everybody else, and everybody was calling to everybody, they'd be, you any new ones today, and this, that, the other, the way this works, everything goes to their office, they compile all of the applications, and they would bring them all out to us in little individual packets.
When the deadline occurs, we'd have to...
We'd all get them at the same time.
Right, the packets would be at the office, and the only, there may be straggling packets where somebody's postmarked, and so we'd have to, you know, and we'd get that too, as well.
We'd all receive them at the same time, and they're taken here for all those types of things. Now, like you say on this first, the applications we get, we don't want all your references and recommendations?
No, you don't need any.
All of that, yeah, some of us didn't anyway.
If they do, you'll get them, because we'll copy them, but that also tells you about reading and instructions.
Well, I'm just going to pass experience, some will do it anyway.
I know, they will, and they will have many rooms of recommendations.
Oh, I, I know, okay, and so, okay, so now, let's go on, assuming we do that, give me a ballpark, or us a ballpark figure for your association to, to this force.
Well, Shirley and I talked about this, and we've got this down to a science, so we were thinking 750, we cover all the logistical things that we need to do, like copying, sending letters, that we've, we've, we've received your application, or answering questions, things like that, plus your advertising will be separate from it. So you're basically looking at, I would think about 1,600 for the whole thing.
Somewhere in that.
Yeah, now, most of this is contingent on advertising, because the things we're talking about, there's a lot of logistical and clerical things, like, we've received your application, then you send someone, you're going to be interviewed, we send a notice about that, things of that nature.
Oh, so do you go to the next phase also?
We do all, well, we can do all of it, we can set up the interviews, we can help you all do your questions.
I mean, but once we've got the packets, and we've looked through them, and we've been as a board, and we decide how many, you know, who we're going to interview.
You screen your applicants.
Okay, okay. Okay. And, okay, well, once we've done that, are you saying that you then communicate that to the?
We do all that, if you want us to. And most boards do that.
Is that included in this?
That's included in that seven fifty. What most boards will do is they'll say, hey, we got fifteen applications. Uh, we've screened them down to five. You need to contact the five that we're, we want to interview. And then what happens after that is we can set up the interviews if you want, or you can. It's up to you. Because these are all customizable. And then, uh, typically, we set up the interviews. They likely would be here. And then, um, what you'll need to do at that point is, and we're getting a little ahead, but give us ten questions that are structured interview questions. And the individuals will know from us, the instructions, who will be interviewed first, second, third, fourth, fifth. And then that occurs during, probably on the Saturday. It could be a weekday. And, um, it seemed to work out really well. And we, like you, we talked the other night. We have questions back to nineteen eighty-six. And things come around in circuit or anyway, so it's not that we're still wrapping. So, uh, it's just a, it's an easy way to do it. And it gets the board involved. You all have two questions. You have a format of the, the applicant, the screened applicant. They will make an opening statement, closing statement, but in between, they have ten questions you'll ask and forty-five minutes to budget the one time and fifteen for any questions beyond, you know, if you have questions unique to that person. So no more than an hour. And you don't have to take time or, time or anything, but, because that, but it, it works out really well because everyone knows ground rules when they sign up to be interviewed, so.
The way Howard explained to me, the, the ten questions, now, are these seven just samples or nothing?
We have, uh, these are, you mean on this here, on this right here?
Yeah.
These are the matrix you use to determine how you, when you get the application form. Now, here's how we've done this. We used to do this different. When you get the application forms, which in, well, basically, the resumes, the curriculum veto or whatever, this is a way for you to go through and, and see what you think in regard to each one of the applications.
That's to narrow them down, isn't it?
That's to help narrow them down, yes. Then you get together as a board, an executive session, and you figure out who you want then to be. These are all applicants at this point, because you have to have a terminology here. These are applicants. Howard O'Call applied, thirteen other people applied. Then you narrow it down and you, then you have screened applicants. These are the people you're going to eventually interview. And then you have your final list.
Okay. So with that part is where we would have to develop the ten questions you mentioned.
Yeah. You would, you would work on them at any point, but they would come into play when you narrow down the five people or so.
And the way you explained it to me is that, um, each board member would ask the same question to every applicant?
That is how we traditionally do, would do that. Um, you would, you would each submit to me three questions or two questions. Then we would put them together. You would see them in advance. And then every board member has the same questions for each one of the applicants. You would start off with the president first and then you would, we'd get into detail. But you would be, the president would ask the first question, then you go down the line and then you have the ten.
Okay. And then, yeah, that takes forty-five minutes for all that, then fifteen minutes for any other?
For any extraneous things, like if someone says something that really piques your interest, like, they, let's say they have a very good program to deal with bullying or something like that. You might say, you know, explain this program to us. How did it work in your county? Can we replicate it here? Would, you know, things like that. So then you, but no interview itself goes beyond one hour, because that's just a, a drop dead date or time. So then you have an hour altogether. And that keeps it timely. Um, the questions can range from very short questions to very specific questions about the system. You need a good mix of questions.
Is it possible for you to share with us, uh, some that have been used?
Oh, yeah.
That what we?
We have a hundred and fifty that we, that have been used over the years. And really, uh, I jokingly said it's come circular, because a lot of those were used many years ago and the issues are still the same, so, so...
That might, I mean, that, not to say that there might not be some others that somebody would be interested in.
That's what most boards do as a matter of fact.
But I mean, if we have something that, you know, um, we want to do that one, whatever. If you could share those with us.
I will. And the other thing too is when you ask questions, um, here's a good point, I think. Ask multi-point questions, three or four different parts, and, um, there's an advantage of that. Um, first of all, a person only has forty-five minutes for this whole routine for questions. And if they start saying, well, part A and part B and part C and part D, that's not, that may be the way to approach the question, but it's usually the larger theme within the question you're after. This gets into theories of questions, so. But that's something that we've done. I wouldn't do that for every question, but out of the ten questions, two or three might be that way. Have multiple parts.
To look at them, we could.
They have them right in front of them. Yeah. They won't see them in advance, but when they're interviewed, they have the questions in front.
Well, talk about us developing the ten.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That would help us in, in doing that. And we know not to have a ten, four-parters, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I do think you need, complex questions are good, and I'm unadvertising, four of those are good, but they all tend, can't be complex, you know.
Right, exactly. I understand, I understand. Okay. Does anybody have anything else, Mr. or Dr. Call?
As far as the media advertising, do you recommend, or have you thought about the timing of that? Should we, should we run the ad the same week and all three media outlets you recommend, or stagger those weeks?
I would recommend, I, I would recommend staggering them. Maybe Charles and Gazette first, then, uh, Herald Dispatch. You could stagger those. Yeah. I think that's the best way to do it. And you get more of your mileage that way, I think.
Now, as far as the ones that are going out to the, the various associations, that just?
They go out whenever you're ready for this to happen.
Depending on whenever they want to share it with their?
With LinkedIn. LinkedIn goes out whenever you have time. And if you approve the notice and you don't, you know, however you change it, modify it, then if you tell us it's ready to go, then we get things out.
Those are, yeah.
Now, one or two more things. June the first is the day, is the deadline by which you have to have the superintendent's compensation set, salary benefits, things like that. So you've got until June one to do all of this. Next thing is, um, we get into an area that I have to mention, and, and I think I know your sentiment on this. What we generally call community involvement. Now, community involvement, you've got to all be in, I've learned this last year. You've got to all be heavily invested in that idea. Most boards do not do that heavily anymore, um, like committees and interview committees and things like that. Most boards now move to a process where you may set aside part of a regular or special meeting for anyone who wishes to come in and talk about the characteristics or qualities they would like to see in the incoming superintendent. They're given two minutes. They have to hand out to whoever's the facilitator a copy of their remarks. We take that, and, and about every board does this, some fashion. We take this, we write up a report for your board. We don't give it to you before your interviews. We give it to you afterwards, and it then informs your decision possibly about the superintendent you might want to select. Um, you don't have to do any of that. But if you do, community involvement, that is something that I would recommend, that you consider that stance. I know Ohio County did that first. It was very well received. And other counties picked up on that. And it eliminates, um...
You're saying you've already chosen your applicants?
These are pe, no, this is, this would be done way before, this could be done before you do any screening or anything. In fact, it's better done very early.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I thought you were saying.
So maybe two weeks from now or three weeks, if you want to do this. You just simply say, and you advertise it in the paper, whatever else, in your schools, and say, we're wanting input from the community in regard to, um, and I don't, I haven't even how to phrase it, qualities or characteristics that you feel like the incoming superintendent should have to deal with problems in the systems or the issues facing our county. And give people two minutes or an adequate amount of time. Have them turn in a written report. And if we, if you do that, I can get the report, then we can get that summarized for you, if you want to do that. Now, again, we could mention, but we don't have to advertise or promote. I'm just mentioning.
Well, that's something we'll have to...
But you need to really think about it. It's, um, it used to be years ago, uh, like in nineteen, well, many years ago, people would have thirty-five member interview committees to interview the people the board was going to interview. Well, that worked for then, but that doesn't work for now, I don't think. But allowing everyone to have an opportunity to come before the board in a very structured way and give people time to talk about the qualities they may want to see, the county may need in a new superintendent, according to them, it is a good way to get that information. And if you don't use it before, if you waited till after you've done your interviews of those individuals, then you can plug in and see how the community thinks. And you hear it anyway, before they come before the board. But it's one thing to hear these individually and another in a report that compiles the main thinking, so.
Well, we'll discuss that. Um, I'm not really, uh, too certain about how much involvement we would have.
Well, that's...
It goes down to, we may or may not. But anyway, we'll keep, we'll have to make that.
I feel bound to take.
Well, we appreciate it. We had a big turnout tonight. Typically, you would see John sitting next to you. And that's, you know, it's, it's nice. Uh, okay. Anything else anyone has to say?
Could I?
Yes, I just wanted to see if any questions?
Why don't you and your superintendent look over this and make any changes, if you're interested, and make any changes that you feel like need to be made or modifications, or fill in the blanks here, and get those to us. And then, and if you're interested, we could go on and start, get started for you. And maybe wait till Monday and let us have this on Monday. Got to give you enough time to look on that.
All right. So everybody's heard, uh, Dr. O'Call's proposal, the cost involved in it.
Can I recap the calls and an email to you tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
And that way, and how to do, okay.
Yeah. Everything, anything you want to send me would be appreciated.
All right.
Then I'll share it with everybody. Um, but, you know, this is one way of doing it, typically. Uh, we've just had our own, advertise it locally and...
Yeah, Shirley can get the Herald Dispatch figures and things like that. So that'll help us narrow down.
This is a little bit more sophisticated, but that's the reason I, I, I reached out to, uh, to Howard here like you said, just to get some input on his thoughts about this. And he's verbally given me all this information. We talked on the phone about it all. Um, and I, I, that's the reason I asked him to come here tonight, because I like the idea. I think it gets the word out and it's, and it's at a reasonable cost. Seems to me like for all you get out of this, wow.
And you control the process.
Yeah. And, uh, it's the same kind of limitations that we typically put on there as far as people contacting and all that kind of stuff. And, and in the end, you know, we're, uh, you see who the applicants are, we, no matter who or where they're from, we decided with this, we want to interview and go from there, so. I don't know, anybody who's general thought that you might want to look at this, so. Not, we should talk about the, you know, go from there sometime.
Well, I think we need to move quickly because we even have a board meeting next week?
No. That's, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a general idea if we want to give him a favorable.
I mean, I...
I'd say yes, myself.
Believe me, I mean, personally, I like the idea of letting him run the show, advertising the three media outlets, LinkedIn, and the press release thing as well. Uh, we need to, one thing we need to think about is the timeline.
Yeah, and I, and I left that open there.
Left that blank. But, I mean, if, if we're going to stagger our weeks of advertising, assuming we can get out everything in, in, and we can start this process by, say, the third or third week or the last week of the month.
Yeah.
I mean, what's a reasonable time to leave this application window open?
Well, we typically say three weeks. So that'd be up into, um, that would probably be into, into March.
But if we're staggering our ads, it's going to be three weeks in the first week ad, two weeks in the second ad?
The, the ads are not, aren't going to be in.
No, there will be one, like the Herald Dispatch one week, Charles Gazette one week. Then you're already going to have during that three-week period, you'll also advertise in the, uh, local paper and also with the, uh, Press Association. So that'll be within three weeks. All the advertising will be done in three weeks. So in other words, if you start, let's say, um, you begin next week, what is next Monday, the tenth? The tenth next Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
Then if you begin on the tenth and you advertise for three weeks, then you're probably going to be up early in March and that's when everything will be done. And you'll get it.
We don't meet again until the eighteenth.
That's right.
Eighteenth. What I would prefer would be, uh, us acting on this and then, uh, having our, uh, agreement with you effective the nineteenth of February.
Okay, so we'll get it. Okay, that'll work.
Okay. You know, we don't want to...
Okay. So let me get, so we need to send an agreement that we typically do for this to you, so you can have your meeting on the eighteenth.
Yeah, the eighteenth is when we would officially like to act on it, so we could have it on our agenda.
Okay.
Uh, and then, um, you know, like I said, everything commences then thereafter.
Okay.
So you're still by mid-March, you're...
You'll have plenty of time. So what I'll do is I'll do a timelines document for you based on what we've just said here. That'll show advertising, applying, things like that. And send that to you. Well, I can send it by email to everyone unless you want to send that to them.
Either way, or if you want to send it to all of them, that's...
Okay. That'd be the easiest way.
They're all in there. Okay. But no, I, like I said, I think it's, it's a good way to go. We get, uh, exposure and hopefully we get some applicants that, uh, are the person we're looking for. Since we're looking at somebody new. Oh, you girls might look at you. Okay. All right, Howard. Appreciate you coming here.
Thank you.
Again, tonight. Watch the deer as you come back home. They're bad on, uh, about three of them.
About three out of four.
I didn't know which way you came. If you bring three, that's a difficult way. But, yeah, I, we appreciate if you'll send those to us and then you and I, we can...
I'll send you timelines and everything. I'll summarize what we talked about.
If I have any, you know, something comes up, I'll holler at you or something. We'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Howard. Okay. Let's, uh, move to the administrative section, please. Have motion?
Yes.
Rowdy made that motion, seconded by Fred. Is that true? Okay. Mr. Beakham?
Item A, West Virginia student Cassie McCormick to complete observation at Midway Elementary during the second semester. Item B, West Virginia student, or Debbie Houston, Ashley Spence to complete observation at Ranger Elementary School during the second semester. Item C, out of county student transfer from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about these two items? Send all yes vote on those. All yes. Finance section, please. Motion? Carol here. Mr. Wilkinson seconded that. Ray?
A, schedule of invoices to the five hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, we got a question on a few of those and I found out what that was. That was July through January, those invoices. We hadn't paid anything up to, they just forgot to give us the invoice.
Several months went by.
It was six months. So he brought those in one day, so that's what we processed. That's what I thought it was. But I talked to Robin and that's what it was.
That's kind of what I thought it was, did it?
Uh, B, a county pension for the following retired employee paid from excess living funds.
Alan McCollum. Okay. Is that all yes vote on finance items?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to personnel then. Motion? Rowdy?
Sure.
Seconded by Fred. Ray? Or not Ray, yeah. Kirk? I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll call first.
I was looking at that direction.
I can't remember when, but I have.
That is true.
So he feels much better.
No offense, man.
Letter A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment of professional personnel pending issuance of first-class permit. Excuse me. Item C, employment of professional personnel pending issuance of certification. Item D, employment of professional personnel pending issuance of alternative certification. Item E, transfer of professional personnel. Item F, a leave of absence. Item G, retirement and resignations.
Did you say strike, test strike?
G two.
I'm not at liberty to speak on that.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm liable to get struck.
I don't think it'd do any good. These would come back. Okay. Is that an all yes on those personnel items?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And it, just real quick on the white sheet, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, an update where we posted, where we had three professionals filled the last week, which is good. Um, and I apologize for not having the service on there last week. Uh, we had a little mix-up in a posting and a, so we do have service personnel on this one after tonight's meeting, but, uh, the posting goes down and there'll be some more good news in the, in the days to come. Uh, we're filling some positions.
Professional or service or both?
Both. Yes, sir.
Good, good. Okay. Okay, we've approved the personnel items. Board members, anything else?
Uh, real briefly, uh, Assistant Superintendent King and I met with, uh, about probably six different members of the Department of Highways. Uh, they surveyed all of the traffic that morning.
They surveyed all of the traffic that morning to make it brief, they'll get back with us. And supposedly the middle of the week, so I can't offer anything else, I don't think you can either.
No, sir, not this time.
Seems like a deja vu here.
Yeah, sort of.
All over again, yeah, with that. Okay, anything else from any members of the board? Mr. Minkin, do you have anything you want to share with us?
I would just request an executive session for a legal, that guarding personnel matter.
So he gets to go home, buddy, yeah. Okay, Mr. Minkin would like to have, did you say it was a personnel matter?
It is.
He's requesting an executive session at nine oh nine P M for personnel, but, item. That was a motion or not? Rowdy made that one, and Carol seconded that. Oh, yes?
Yeah.